It's Tuesday, May 14th, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
And we've got minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 7th and also the special meeting on May 8th.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
All right, open up pending, public comment regarding any pending resolutions? Okay, now go ahead and proceed. We do have some commendation presentations. This one, I believe Mr. Lee is here. Thank you. This recognized specialist for William G. Lee for being inducted into the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for Valor Class of 2024. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Specialist for William G. Lee, Brunswick, Ohio, has been inducted into the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for Valor Class of 2024. Whereas the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for Valor was established in 2000 to recognize Ohio servicemen and women who were decorated for heroism while in combat situation. And whereas Specialist for Lee, United States Army, distinguished himself by valorous action on July 14th, 1970. When his unit became engaged with a determined enemy force with complete disregard for his own safety, he exposed himself to the intense hostile fire as he moved forward to the point of heaviest contact and began placing a heavy volume of suppressive fire upon the insurgent forces. And whereas Specialist for Lee's actions were an inspiration to the other members of his unit and were instrumental in the successful completion of the mission. And whereas Specialist for Lee's display of personal bravery and devotion to duty in keeping with the highest traditions of the military service and reflects great credit upon him, his unit, the United States Army, and this country, earning him the Bronze Star Medal with the V device. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Specialist for William G. Lee for going above and beyond the call of duty and performing heroically in combat actions against armed enemies of the United States of America. Be it further resolved that the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to congratulate Specialist for William G. Lee for his induction into the Ohio Military Hall of Fame. Please come forward.
I brought the bill. I don't know if they want to see it.
Definitely.
All right. You're able to say a few words.
I'm not good at words. So I don't know if they want to see it.
Go ahead, sure.
Because I was so surprised when I received it. So of course, I'm a man of few words.
But thank you for your service. Thank you so much. We do have another commendation recognizing First Lieutenant Joseph Dale Omera for being inducted into the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for Valor Class of 2024. Whereas it's come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that First Lieutenant Joseph Dale Omera has been inducted into the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for Valor Class of 2024. Whereas the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for Valor was established in 2000 to recognize Ohio servicemen and women who are decorated for heroism while in combat situation. Whereas United States Army Air Corps First Lieutenant Dale Omera's B-24D Liberator bomber malicious left on a mission to Messina, Sicily on January 31st, 1943. The plane encountered intense anti-aircraft fire when entering the bomb run, taking out both portside engines, but delivered its bombs on the target. On the way back to base, the crippled ship was attacked by seven enemy fighters and fought them off until it had only one engine left. And whereas the bomber crash landed on the sea about 45 miles offshore. Although four men were observed boarding two life rafts, no trace of survivors could be found when rescue teams arrived. And whereas First Lieutenant Joseph Dale Omera, Wadsworth, Ohio, was posthumously awarded the Silver Star to get distinguished flying cross and Purple Heart among other decorations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor First Lieutenant Joseph Dale Omera for his gallantry in action against an enemy of the United States. Be it further resolved that the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize the family of First Lieutenant Joseph Dale Omera for his induction into the Ohio Military Hall of Fame for Valor Class of 2024. I know this is posthumous, the family members aren't here, but we do have members from our Vietnam, our Veteran Services Commission. If you'd please come forward and accept this.
Sure. Just want to thank everybody again, especially the Commissioners. They take a lot of time to recognize the veterans. Our office appreciates it. And if you get a chance, Sue back there and her assistant, put a neat display out here for the Veteran Services. I think she just finished that, right?
Yeah, within minutes, I think, of starting the meeting.
So anyway, it's really cool. And thanks very much for all your time and recognition.
Thank you, thank you. That's not good. All right, I think we do have another commendation, do we not? Or is that proclamation?
Proclamation.
Proclamation, excuse me. This is a proclamation. This proclaimings May 2024 as All Rise National Treatment Court Month in Medina County. Whereas according to All Rise, treatment courts are the most successful intervention in our nation's history for leading people with substance abuse and mental health disorders out of the justice system and into the lives of recovery, stability, and health. And whereas there are now more than 4,000 treatment courts nationwide. Whereas treatment courts are the cornerstone of justice reform sweeping the nation. Whereas treatment courts have transformed the way the justice system responds to people with substance abuse and mental health disorders by combining accountability with evidence-based treatment. And whereas treatment courts annually refer more than 150,000 people to lifesaving treatment and recovery support services. Whereas according to All Rise, treatment courts significantly improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crime, and do so at least at less expensive than other justice strategy. And whereas treatment courts improve education, employment, housing, financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements. And whereas treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health. Whereas treatment courts demonstrate that when one person rises, we all rise. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio declares that Treatment Month be established in Medina County during the month of May. Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any comments? I understand, Erin, you're going to be presenting this for the ceremony tomorrow. So roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. With that, we'll go ahead and proceed with our agenda. If we have the Highway Department.
Morning.
Good morning.
One resolution for your consideration today. Resolution approving change order number two for the Pawnee Road Bridge Number 14 replacement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeremy Sinco. We haven't seen you in a while.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number one for the Advanced Metering Infrastructure System Project. I'd like to point out that that is a deduct change order. And the second is awarding the Second Street Water and Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Very good, thanks, Jeremy. Denise Testar, Planning Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
So I have two resolutions for your consideration. The first is rescinding a previous project award resolution for the PY-22 CDBG Village of Lodi, Richmond, Field Walkway Improvement Project and reauthorizing the award for the project. Our second resolution is accepting and awarding the bid for the City of Brunswick-McKinley-Garfield Resurfacing Project funded by the county's CDBG program.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? I will point out that we do have a special Commissioners Meeting, a CDBG work session on Wednesday.
Correct.
That is a public meeting. It's at 10:30 here at the office, for those that are interested. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Holly Muir, our Human Resources Director. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personnel changes today, we have two new hires, one at Job and Family Services and one in Sanitary. Eight rate increases, two in Sanitary, two at Job and Family Services, two in Transit, one in Human Resources, and one in Solid Waste. One leave of absence at County Home, one probationary removal at Sanitary, and one retirement at Sanitary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Holly. Brett Thomas, Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have six resolutions for your consideration today. The first is a revenue adjustment for the Sheriff's Office. When the state sends over their amounts, they do not oftentimes tell us exactly what that was for. So we had one that landed in the wrong account. Our second resolution is transfers for print shop revenue in the amount of $2,304.52. Our third resolution is amending a grant for the Felony Delinquent Care and Reclaim Grant. Our fourth resolution is amending the sub-grant with ODJFS for the Family First Council. They got an additional $3,800 award. Our fifth resolution is our expenses of county officials. Nothing out of town this time. And our sixth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $2,595,077.16.
Move to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Chris Jacob, our County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Three resolutions for you this morning. The first authorizes the Solid Waste Department to purchase a new Chevy Silverado, three-fourth ton crew cab pickup. The amount of the purchase is $64,412. This is to allow them to have their staff pick up various items at the recycling stations around the county that otherwise don't get put into the containers properly, along with some other tasks in the campus area down at the Solid Waste Facility. Next resolution amends the fee structure for the issuance of stormwater permits and site inspections and for driveway and highway use permits. This is subsequent to the public hearings that the Board held with the county engineer on April, May 7th, my apologies, regarding increases in fee structure that has not been amended for quite some time. As we previously discussed, there are increasing expenditures associated with that department and the need to raise additional revenues associated directly with the functions of that division to try to minimize further increases in the general fund subsidy to the Stormwater Division. And then third and final resolution this morning authorizes the leasing of a vehicle for Medina County Sheriff's Office. This is through the Enterprise Lease Program. This is a new Ford Expedition to be procured 2023 and replaces the existing Chevy Tahoe, I believe, which is used in part for jail prison transportation.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? I'll just mention that, as was mentioned in the public hearings, the last time the stormwater fees, permit fees, were adjusted was 2005. So it's been quite a while, and I think they were reasonable adjustments. Still, in part subsidized by the county, but obviously more an adjustment with the developers, the property owners, as well as those that are, that need to have the fees adjusted or making those improvements in stormwater. So I think it's reasonable to go ahead and approve this.
I should also mention that this would be effective July 1st and allow the engineer to provide sufficient notice to folks that the fee increases will be in effect on that date.
Right, all right. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. All right. Next, our department updates. Greg Brown, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Census at the Medina County Home, 45 residents, three adult daycare participants, staffing at this point. We do have one position posted on Indeed for aid. First shift and third shift is needed. Building updates, so much moving at the County Home right now. Five-star painting came in. Some of our hallways were repainted with the color that's in the main foyer, as well as the 1A hallway, which has been the renovation project from last year and continuing this year. Also, we had a room up on the second floor that still had wallpaper from I don't know what era in there. And then when we pulled the wallpaper, we discovered that there was actually a backer board behind that. And then when that came off, we saw why that was there. And five-star painting made that all go away. And skim coat of the walls painted, the room looks beautiful. And then to finish up that room, Baker Brothers Floors, Greg Breakers, the owner, came in, refinished those oak floors in there. Looks beautiful. And the last part of that room is, this week, maintenance is coming to do some crown molding and some other just small repairs to the room so I can finally get it back together for the residents. The bathrooms on 1A are now complete. Partitions are in, doors are on, new locks. Yeah, finally, that project is done, and they're great. And it's great to hear when the residents compliment you and say thank you for, you know, for those improvements. So that was something really great to hear. And one of the other things that we have done, like small things, but if you come through the back double doors, the white letters are now black. Just something, you know, if you're looking for things around the building as well. Maintenance has been very busy at our place, too. The garden, we're ready to start planting again. And two of our flower-raised gardens were falling apart. Maintenance came in, put those back together for us. The Park District sent Joe over for, you know, for about the third year now for our garden. So we're tilled and ready to go. We've changed out some lighting in the home as well, putting in a candelabra style versus the 70s version of lighting. Also, some of the things that are in progress, we did receive a grant for water dispensers. I have the water dispensers at my location. However, they're in the process of being installed because they need to be connected to a drain versus my ones that I currently have that are rented just have a reservoir that they collect in. So there was a little extra that I didn't realize was going to happen, but it will. And that'll save money to the home as well by not having it to rent. InterFinish is our flooring vendor. We still have flooring that's due to come in for the 1A hallway. So that should be at the end of this month. And then also, I have got maintenance coming in as the 1A is the priority, to put ceiling tiles in and the new lighting, which has already been, has been purchased and just waiting for them. One of the other projects that we're working on, Proximity Marketing, who takes care of the County Home Server. Ours is outdated, and we are working with them to come to the county's system to piggyback off of you. Thank you so much. Some of the events hosted, Access the Arts has been at our place numerous times. Volunteer Appreciation Day, where we actually give back to those, volunteer for us, put on a little luncheon. May 5th was the Clutter Horse Show, which was completely different this year because they did not have the show at the fairgrounds. There was something that came up with them not getting the date. So we went to their, to their property, and it was beautiful. They saw, they still have horses and donkeys, and it was great there. More relaxing, more cover versus being up on top of the hill looking at the horses. But that was their primary means of support for them to provide all their stuff for the home. But they're working on something else to compensate for that. Senior Day is coming up here this month at the Medina County Fairgrounds. We'll have our people there. We also, on June 20th is our summer celebration. So we combined our Mother's Day and Father's Day into one. June 20th, first day of summer, the day right after Juneteenth, our day off. We've got, Friends Medina County Home are providing a food truck and the shave ice truck coming to our location. And then there have been many visits from therapy dogs. We're starting up our trips to local parks. Hubbard Valley was last Friday, so we're getting out, getting fresh air. And then just to finish up with donations, we've had, since the last meeting, milk, eggs, flowers, pendant garments, personal care items. There's always influx through our back double doors, and it's greatly appreciated.
Great, okay, all right, very good.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. All right. Philip Titterington, Adam Board Director, for a brief update. Your brevity.
Sounds like I need to go to the adults' County Home. They're having a good time there. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to just present here. Also, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and this county does a very good job at chipping away at the stigma. I think we've all seen through our interactions, collaborations, that, you know, it's okay to talk about mental health and the needs. And you've seen kind of a vast variety from mental health programs that assist with law enforcement all the way through schools, so, and adults and seniors. So all right, I'll provide you with a quick update on levy dollars and how the Adam Board is using those. So just as a reminder, we have 44 supportive housing units that we help and house individuals with severe persistent mental illness. We have case management around them. We have a waitlist, so I know that the, working with the city, the county, as well as Metro Housing on Lafayette, we're excited that those units are going to be built because that's going to serve some on the waiting list as well. So we do appreciate that partnership as well. We continue to see an increase in need for adult group homes. We don't have enough group homes. And the price for those group homes, when they do choose to take in one of our clients or individuals who have that level of need, it's very expensive. And our Northland Two Place, we have 11 units there that really, right currently, is the only units that house individuals with a homeless designation, if you will. So once again, it's going to be a welcome sight to have that emergency shelter, especially in the vicinity there. So we look forward to that. So moving on to kind of the service data. So I'm reporting once again for the period of January through March. We have Alternative Paths, who is currently located, have physical locations in Brunswick, Lodi, Medina, and Wadsworth. And we have Ohio Guidestone, that has two physical locations in Medina, plus they do a plethora of services in the home around the county. So transportation barrier, we've done a good job at helping to reduce that. Still there, but, you know, at least we're chipping away. So in this quarter, Alternative Paths Catholic Charities in Ohio Guidestone served 6,146 total clients, and that's broken up to approximately 90% adults, 10% youth. There were approximately 1,948 adults, 179 youth, which broken down to 38%, 36%. Oops, I got that wrong. So 64% versus 36% youth that are being served and receiving psychiatric services. There are approximately 256 youth that are diagnosed with serious emotional disturbances, which is kind of the high end there, if you will. The Adam Board's Youth Resiliency and Counseling Center has been operating for a year now, and it is providing trauma-informed care and behavioral health services for youth and families as they work to heal from mental health, substance use, and traumatic experiences. Also, with the Human Services Levy funding, Adam Board portion is critical. It's allowed us to fill gaps in services, unfunded gaps, if you will. One of the big ones is the 24/7 Crisis Behavioral Helpline that is operated through Alternative Paths. So during this reporting period, there were 799 calls or engagements through the hotline. Of those, 110 individuals verbalized suicidal thoughts. There were 73 active rescues, and there were 104 referrals made directly from law enforcement. There were seventy-three active rescues, and there were a hundred and four referrals made directly from law enforcement. Alternative Paths also operates our Loss Local Outreach to Suicide Survivors Program funded by the Adam Board. And unfortunately, they were dispatched five times during this period. In addition, a big one that we use levy dollars for is Recovery Supports. Kathy's House, as a reminder, is now under Hope Recovery Community, so they are one entity as that. And Hope Recovery Community is in four physical locations. Their main location's in Medina. They also operate on the farm in Medina, and they have operation in Brunswick as well as Wadsworth. Last page. They operate three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They have a twenty-four-seven Hope Link Program where individuals can call at any time, get connected with a peer supporter to help them on their journey in recovery or what they need. During this reporting period, there were a hundred and eighty-three calls to the Hope Link Program. And many of those individuals were helped. There were, there are fifteen certified peer recovery supporters working at Hope Recovery Community and seven at Ohio Guidestone. And they served an average, they serve about average of eighty-nine individuals per month. They provided, Hope Recovery Community provided peer support to a hundred and sixty-eight inmates inside the jail. And that ends, that's so critical because that aids in the transition back into the community, which ultimately connects them to employment and other available services, which will reduce the recidivism or the chances that they come back to jail. They've linked ninety individuals to detox residential or recovery housing. And that's critical because not only do individuals have that twenty-four-seven where they can connect, but the Adam Board also funds any of those that insurance doesn't cover. And then, also a big one here is medication-assisted treatment to help in their recovery. It can and often does start in the jail, or it can be continued in the jail, that's relatively new. There are ninety-four individuals per month that receive MAT through Ohio Guidestone and Alternative Paths. There are twelve women housed at our Adam Board's Hope Recovery Community, Level Three, and there's a waitlist for that. And then with Adam Board support, there are forty male recovery beds throughout the county, now under Hope Recovery Community, formerly Kathy's House, and there's a waiting list for that. So we do as much as we possibly can with the levy. We're very appreciative for those levy funds. That might be my shortest yet. Any questions? And it's on you if you keep it longer.
How will we see you at the ceremony tomorrow for recovery?
I think I'll be in Columbus, but you, Ms. Shelton from my office will be there.
Great, very good. Thank you, appreciate the.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
We have the Commissioner's Resolution. This appoints representative to the Ohio Children's Trust Fund Northeast Ohio Regional Prevention Council. This will appoint Stephanie Young and Ashley Kraus to serve as our two representatives on the council, replacing Michelle Kipstool and Debbie Kylie, who have served two consecutive full terms. And this will be their terms from July 1st, two thousand twenty-four, to June 30th, two thousand twenty-six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move second, a discussion.
I think that's a good choice.
Yep.
Glad they were both willing to serve.
Indeed. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Alright, this appoints a member to the Medina County Library Board of Trustees. Jill McGar of Medina County District Library Board had to resign and they created a vacancy. The Board of Commissioners, I believe it was like fourteen or fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen applications. We did, we reviewed those, interviewed, and we have desired to select Sarah Vekon to be appointed to the Board of Trustees to complete the previous term of Jill McGar, and with that term to end by December 31st, two thousand twenty-nine.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move second. I just want to thank Sarah for her willingness to serve on that as a voluntary position, but certainly one very important to the District Library.
I'd also say it was a really strong group of candidates.
Yes.
I mean, the finalists all did a great job with their interviews and I'm pleased with our selection, but it was a very encouraging group. And I think others who applied might be able and willing to serve in other capacities, too, which only strengthens when we need community involvement for the future.
Absolutely.
Indeed, if Sarah hadn't been, we had other candidates who were just as close, actually, that we could have chosen from. It's good to have that kind of response. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes, alright. Next, open to public comment. Stan, you're the public right now. Do you have anything? Not today? Okay, we're cool. Alright, alright, thank you, alright. Go ahead and open up a discussion. Chris, did you want to bring up anything, or are you gonna?
Sure.
Okay.
Just a few updates on several items. The morgue project at the Medina Hospital, I had reached out to ask for an update on that project. As you know, that's, we partially or mostly funding that project out of the ARPA dollars that were made available to the county. My, the correspondence I received in return was they were ready to begin construction at the end of April and hopefully complete the project by the end of June. So I'll continue to keep you updated on that. Solar project at OSU, that finally went live. And we've been receiving regular reports on the solar power that's been generated. I'll share these with you.
Wow.
I'm sure I fully understand some of the numbers, but it appears, based on what we have there, that we're generating more at that building than we're actually using, consuming.
Oh, that's great.
In energy.
So are they able to store it on site and then use it later, or is, how's that?
Uh.
Just goes to the grid?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so that way we're getting pennies on the dollar.
And depending on, depending on when you produce it, because the time that you sell it back to the grid, if it's not the peak time, you're getting less.
Well, it's what everybody else is generating on their solar panels.
But at least we have the energy bill, so that's nice.
It's better than nothing.
Yeah, that's kind of cool.
Yeah, so I'll try to.
And they utilize this in their education component, too.
That's right. Kyle Hoyt from OSU is putting together some educational curriculum. And I think she has already made one or two presentations, I think, so.
Great.
Just so you're aware.
As rainy as it was at the end of April, too, this is a good sign. Because we did, we had some pretty nasty days and there's still
We did.
production there, so that's a good thing.
Yeah. There, we received a pricing estimate from the architect on the restroom project here yesterday. It came in lower than we had anticipated, the estimate.
Did that?
They finalized drawings.
Coral Room, the estimate?
Uh, I need to double-check on that because there was an issue.
Because it became under, I think we should just do Coral Room, though.
Well, we want to talk to you about some other budget needs, if we can, in a little bit in the conference room. If we can move over there. We've got a
Sure.
use of technology in the room next door and to talk about some other projects.
Which will still be part of the public meeting.
Yes.
Right, yep.
Yeah. So I just wanted to update you and Stephen, our facilities director, is reviewing the drawings to make sure they've incorporated the changes that we discussed when Commissioner Sweattick and Stephen and I met with, and Matt Spurran, met with the architects, so.
Good.
EMA project. It's going fairly smoothly. You approved four change orders last week. There was an outstanding issue with stormwater in terms of increased scope of work that was required by our stormwater division at the county engineer's office. We were able, with Dan Will Hoyt's assistance, we were able to move the total estimated cost down for that change. It was originally priced at approximately twenty-seven thousand. So there's been some swap-out of some materials that Dan feels are more than adequate to meet the needs out there. And so we've reduced that by about another ten thousand. But there remains an outstanding pending change of seventeen three fifty-two. We have fully obligated the eight hundred thousand dollars in state capital grant money.
So we made all the deadlines for that.
Well, I'll get to that in a minute. And we've, there was another hundred and forty thousand dollars also available for the project.
Hundred and forty, which was EMA dollars, right? I mean, it was already.
That were received at the EMA agency, right?
Right.
For a total of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. This final, well, pending change order is probably not currently budgeted anywhere. We have authorized the contractor to proceed with the work so it didn't hold up the whole project. And that's so we could draw down still by the June 30th deadline, the eight hundred thousand dollars. So I know, I think there's an EMA board meeting tomorrow.
Right.
And I just wanted to make you aware, since two of you are on that board, that this remains an outstanding issue. Happy to talk to you about some options.
About seventeen, you said?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I'd like to see what the discussion is at the EMA meeting before we commit either way.
And Ben is aware of this, I presume?
He is. He, and he has the details that I have, and I'll share these with you before you head to that meeting.
Because it's not holding up the work, as you said, we've, the work is proceeding.
Right.
So I think we.
We basically have to make modification EMA budget.
Or identify a cost center.
Or cost center, yeah, what we're gonna do. Or if they have any other donors.
Right.
I guess, okay, we'll have to deal with that seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand three fifty-two.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
Deal with that tomorrow morning, I guess, you know, okay.
And I'll, I'll give you copies, so you'll have those to take with you tomorrow.
Alright.
Couple other updates.
Did you say that we were gonna talk about the expending of those dollars, or is that still coming? I don't want to get you out of order.
The expending of.
The, the state money? You said we'll get.
Oh, so in order to keep this project moving, we authorized the contractor to proceed.
Yeah.
I told Ben we would work through the cost center issue for this outstanding amount. We want to keep the project moving so that we could successfully draw down by the June 30th deadline on the state grants, so. Which, again, is eight hundred thousand dollars, so.
No, that makes sense.
Right.
And coming quick.
Yep.
But if you've seen the building, I don't know if it's under roof yet. Last I saw, all the siding was up. So I assume that the roof was probably the next step, but it's, it's going up quickly.
Yeah, and they remain on schedule.
Good.
We, you know, had a couple hiccups, but, and we've got a construction meeting out there at two o'clock today, so I'll be attending that. If there's anything that results from that meeting, I'll update you before your board meeting tomorrow.
Good, alright.
A couple other quick items. We also have architectural, architects reviewing the jail platform improvement, which you had funded in the ARPA dollars. We had estimated a hundred and ten thousand dollars available for that. We've had several meetings with the sheriff's office on their radio and tower upgrade project. That one's coming in seemingly over budget. So we still have some work to do, I think, on trying to figure out what the final number will be. And then corresponding procurement methods associated with the purchase of some of the.
How much over?
Maybe a hundred thousand.
Is it materials cost, or?
It's increases in mostly, I think, the dispatch council equipment, computer equipment. We have to, they're now requiring that we purchase all new rather than replacements of some of the components of the councils, so.
Can you remind me, is, on the radio, on the tower portion of that, yeah, there's some EMA dollars in the?
There's, I believe, a two hundred thousand dollar federal grant that was received by EMA or awarded to EMA that I believe EMA has agreed to kind of combine with the sheriff's potential project. I think he's looking to possibly build an additional tower in the Seville area.
So that's a separate project?
That's a separate project.
I didn't know if it was part of this project.
Yeah, completely separate. And I believe the sheriff has requested capital grant dollars to assist with the other unfunded portion of that. The last one that was constructed in the county was the Hinkley Tower. And this is, I think, the final remaining kind of geographic gap in their service there. And then finally, domestic relations, we're still working through some of the details on the acoustical and security improvements there, for their hearing rooms and off of their lobby, that big lobby. So I think we're getting close to finalizing that. And then finally, I want to talk to you about parking improvement for this building. We have drawings and estimates for some options, and we wanted to show you that, the drawings on the monitor in the conference room, so if that's okay, whenever you're ready.
Sure.
We can move next door and go through that with Stephen real quick, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Great, Chris.
Thank you.
That's all, that was a lot.
Yeah.
Alright, alright.
Those were an expensive couple of minutes.
Matt, anything? Okay, alright. Colleen?
Um, I, the, a couple of representatives from the Fair Board reached out to me. I'm meeting with them on Monday to reopen the talks about the RFQ, so.
Really?
Yeah, so excited about that.
Good, good, excellent.
Last week, I had the opportunity to visit the Wayne County Dog Shelter with Chris and with our dog warden, Dell. And we had a very interesting visit down there, and this is kind of on the heels of some of the discussions that came up of budget time about kind of the long-term plans for that facility. And I learned a lot. It's, there's a really interesting facility. Wayne County had the benefit of having a kennel operation that was being sold that they acquired. So they didn't build from scratch. And there's some, obviously, some benefits to that in terms of costs, probably some downsides in terms of it's not a perfect fit. But it was interesting to see the operation down there and just identify some of the opportunities for long-term improvement. So on the heels of what I joked was an expensive couple of minutes, I'm not ready to dive headfirst into a new building project, but I know it was something that we discussed in budget times. And so I think we, you know, at some point, we probably need to have a bigger strategic discussion timelines and what that project could look like.
Right.
And so just wanted to update you that some wheels are starting to turn in that regard, so.
Good.
Good.
And then I don't know if, were you gonna mention Immigration Summit? That was on my list.
No, I wasn't, but go ahead.
We talked about this before the meeting, and I don't think anybody in this room was, was in the attendance for that. I know the Gazette was there. But Friday is Immigration Summit that the Economic Development Corporation put on. I thought was really, really beneficial information, coming at it from not so much a political perspective, but from, you know, workforce kind of a standpoint, talking about more, you know, policy, you know, reform opportunities on the immigration side. I think a lot of times, immigration policy gets conflated with border policy and it makes it a, you know, toxic event, they're toxic issue people don't want to talk about. But the resources they brought in to have the discussion and also the perspectives, kind of the people side of it, all I thought were really, really beneficial. I'd like, I think their intention is for that to drive some further discussions in the community. And anything we can do to, you know, help support them in that mission, I think, is a good investment in the workforce and economic future for the community.
Well, I'd agree, it was a, it was a great summit, actually. A lot of good discussion. Certainly understand, not only from the business perspective, but the individuals that have come to this country that are working within the various corporations and businesses, some were CEOs and others locally and just their personal stories. But the cost and the time it took them to actually accomplish that is just amazing how difficult it is for individuals that are, I mean, they're contributing significantly to our society, and yet all the obstacles and impediments seem to be more bureaucratic than they are substantive.
Right.
And I think that was the message. It was, really was an outstanding summit, it really was.
And you see a subset of people in our community, and we all know these people in our community. We've interacted with several people on the panel or people I interact with, you know, at different points in my career. But you don't, you don't think about them as having an immigration story behind them because they're just part of our community. But a lot of those folks do have a very, you know, a great love for our country and are eager to come here and seek to come here and assimilate. And so I, just those stories, I think, need to be told more often. So I thought it was a great identifying a need maybe that I wouldn't have identified without their help, so, so good job by that, by that crew.
Well, the one, one amusing one had to do with English being a common language, but actually different meanings. Fortnite, was, were you there for the Fortnite? That just means two weeks. And only those like with Shakespeare or familiar with Lincoln's, Lincoln's writing, Abraham Lincoln's writing, used the word Fortnite. And so it's like.
Or Taylor Swift.
Or Taylor Swift, right? So I mean, it was, it was very, very, very interesting, so, but thanks. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. I did want to bring up for a discussion the Medina County Thoroughfare Task, Area Transportation Task Force. The last time there was produced a thoroughfare plan, and that involves the four townships surrounding Medina City. So was the city and Lafayette, Montville, Medina, and York. They were brought together to deal with some recommendations that were made way back in two thousand one, two thousand two. And one of them involved removing a planned thoroughfare at the, basically, at the intersection of 162 and 3. It's now a roundabout. Years ago, it was not. It was intended to go west and a thoroughfare developed, and it was decision the task force to recommend removing that thoroughfare plan for various, various reasons. Task Force to recommend removing that thoroughfare plan, uh, for various, uh, various reasons, uh, some of it involving the additional cost to go west from that there, because there's a large gas main, a million-dollar investment, it'll have to for relocation, there's other, uh, connecting streets, too, that would have to be addressed, so there was the recommendation of the Task Force to go through the process of removing references, uh, in, for those required intersections. And then it has to do with the, then, of course, as the community, as Montville and Lafayette go forward, that they would then, uh, develop the, develop the properties, allow the, the property owners to go ahead and pursue moving forward with the development plans that involve the Park District, nonprofit, as well as a, uh, one of our other housing developers, to come up with a plan that meets with the current zoning and with the requirements of those two local communities. So, the recommendations are, this, I brought this forward, this is a draft, we will be, uh, we're requested to pass it, as well as the city of Medina, uh, Montville, and Lafayette Township. Um, so, this is, uh, and if you have any questions, uh, they make those technical references just for removing that connection, as well as, uh, Grove Wood, uh, I think it was Grove Wood, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Grove Wood Lane, uh, that they essentially, because it's a stub street, that they have some kind of a, either a turnaround, or some way for the ability for emergency vehicles to come, to basically turn around, since there's no longer going to be a, a connection to Grove Wood. So, I think, uh, with that, it was unanimous.
Yeah, the only question I had about that, I'm certainly, obviously, in favor, and are we taking action on this today?
No, this is for next time.
This is a draft?
This is just for discussion, if the public, if anybody wants to come forward, um, like I said, all, all the townships have representatives, as well as the city, uh, they're aware of it, each of them are gonna go through their recommendations, and this essentially, uh, removes that reference.
So, the only question I had when I looked at that was the, the number thirty-two, that, that state right one, three, eight, one sixty-two intersection. Did that only reference the portion of that intersection with
To the east.
Yeah, to
To the
To the west.
To the west.
The portion that doesn't have the roundabout.
That's right.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that was, was, what wasn't entirely clear to me.
Yeah, it, I, it just referencing, it's amendment to that report.
Right.
So, I think you've got copies of it, or we've sent copies, uh, of that two thousand one, two thousand two report.
Yep.
Uh, that final report.
Okay.
So. Okay, well, uh, with your approval, we'll move forward next, uh, next week with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Alright, the other I would bring up, the Ohio Public Works Commission, that our Regional, uh, Integrating Committee met on, um, Friday, um, and in that discussion was a re-, was